So what I have, what I've decided to do today since yesterday was Veterans Day. I've invited our Vietnam Veteran Board Member David Pearson to say a couple of words about the importance and meaning of Veterans Day, also called Armistice Day, and then lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance. So David, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, President Farmer. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm glad to honor my fellow veterans today. And on Veterans Day as on Memorial Day, I'm always reminded of a saying that I used to see up on a billboard in Virginia, on a street that I drove by all the time. And it said, "All gave some, and some gave all." And I think that's a reminder of exactly the sacrifice that some of our veterans made. So now if you'll all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Yelly or Osana?
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And thank you again, President Farmer, for allowing me to do that.
No problem, David. Thank you. All right, we have a quorum, and then some. A lot of folks are visiting with us today. Mr. Carmel, do we have anything to report from post-session?
Thank you, President Farmer. At the October 15th board meeting, the board continued to discuss the performance of the general manager and related compensation issues, and continued to discuss labor negotiations regarding the management and confidential employee group. But there's nothing to report.
All right, thank you very much. We have agenda review. Any additions or deletions that anyone would like to present? Hearing none?
President Farmer?
Yes.
Yes, and it wasn't so much asking to have anything pulled from the consent agenda, but I had a question for clarification, which I can just address when we get to the consent agenda. But I just wanted to bring that up.
All right, Vice President Stidell, thank you so much. So moving forward to item number two in the commission report, the Prose Chairman, Parcs Are Creation Open Space, Steve Niffen is with us, always in good humor. So Steve, it's all yours, buddy.
Well, Gary, that's fine of you to say that I'm in good humor. This is my first Prose Chair report as the Dodgers, as the world champions. So that makes it a much better. There you go. That being said, you know, I don't think that I have anything to report new from the November meeting, other than we want to stay on the program that the board feels most comfortable with. That being said, I just got back from a meeting with Carlos and kind of got up to speed with him where we're at, what his feelings are towards things. And I believe that we're going to move forward, you know, on both of our projects, the skate project and the bathrooms, and work on the grant opportunity from the state grant, and pretty much go from there. So I think other than entertaining some questions, that might be the most efficient use of my time right there.
Well, since you usually are very entertaining, Tim, excuse me, Steve, does anyone wish to make any comment to Mr. Niffen on this lovely day? Well, doesn't appear as if anyone wishes to, Steve. So you just have just a brief time here in front of the screen for us. Okay, good. Thank you, Steve. Have a pleasant weekend, okay? And tell the family, especially Gary, we said hello, okay?
Will do. Thank you, buddy.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number three in public comment. These are comments that can be made on items that have relevance with the district, but not necessarily on today's agenda. So I see one person in attendance, and Osana, if you could let us know who that is and introduce them, please?
Yes, Christine Heinrichs will be talking.
Thank you.
Thank you. I asked the board again today to direct the general manager and engineering staff to stop approving all new construction permits. At the November 6 Coastal Commission meeting, the commission was clear and emphatic in denying the Satimi permit and seeking ways to end this practice by the district. At last week's meeting, commission members and staff expressed frustration with the district's obstinate persistence in approving these permits, despite repeated unanimous decisions from the commission, such as Arianna, Hayden, Swift, and others. I hope all the directors and the staff members concerned with these applications and the EWS CDP permit application will watch the video and hear directly from the commission members as to what they think of the district's actions. The Satimi permit consideration followed the commission's discussion of its five-year strategic plan. It's ambitious and visionary, but carrying it out is limited by insufficient funding. The commissioners praised their dedicated and passionate staff, who are working above and beyond to serve the public and the coast. Sending these permits to the commission for final denial adds unnecessary work to their already busy schedules. One commissioner said that approving permit applications that it knows will be denied at the commission level is an invitation to litigation. Please consider this when you evaluate District Council's advice to consider renewing his contract. As Vice Chair Donna Brownsey said, "This is a local jurisdiction not being straight with the parcel owners who want to develop these parcels, that in fact, there is no water." Commissioner Dana Bocchio characterized the district's continued approvals with what is in polite company called a barnyard epithet. The district can settle this now by telling the general manager to stop. The Coastal Commission considered other actions, including asking our state representatives to take legislative action to require Cambria to comply. Or they could, as Commissioner Bocchio suggested, get a billboard that says, "Don't believe these people." I hope the board will act to avoid further public humiliation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heinrichs. I believe we have another person in the audience who wishes to speak. Would you introduce them, please, Osana?
Star video, Elizabeth Bettenhousen. Yes, Elizabeth Bettenhousen.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. Is my mute unmuted?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I want to report that this morning at Santa Rosa Creek Lagoon, I saw a marvelous hawk, absolutely patient creature on a tree stump. And I was walking the beach again. I had seen a dead sea otter over the past two weeks, et cetera. And I want to say that one of the things that has really confused the beginning of November for me is watching the meeting of the California Coastal Commission. Because I had thought that the CCSD was in discussions agreeing to comply with the regulations, and discover that somebody, one of the commissioners actually said, "Maybe we should issue a cease and desist order against CCSD and the county." My friends, I don't care where our perspectives are, they're all different. My perspective on the elections, I was rejoicing in early November this year. And as I sent in a letter to you, my rejoicing was diminished significantly by what the California Coastal Commission had to do. I urged all of you to watch that meeting, please. I posted on social media the notice about the meeting and urged people to watch. Cambria was a leader when I moved here in preservation of the land, in beginning to look seriously at conservation. And now we are unfortunately an embarrassment. And I laugh a bit because I'm embarrassed to think that this town has come to that. Please, board members currently, directors-elect, general manager, utilities manager, district engineer, et cetera, please start taking seriously the regulations that are in place to help save, guess what, planet Earth in this climate crisis. If you don't, you will become even more embarrassing to all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bettenhousen. I believe we have a director who wishes to make a comment actually to Director Rice?
I just was going to ask Mr. Carmel if there's anything that we can report regarding the, this particular thing going to the commission, or any of the other intent-to-serves that seem to have gone out without board approval, et cetera. Or if that's not appropriate, I understand. I'd just like to see if there's any way we can get this information, because my understanding is that doesn't seem like the Coastal Commission had the complete information.
Yeah, I can briefly respond. As you know, we're not really supposed to respond to public comment. In many instances, we're contractually obligated to issue these letters as a result of settlement of lawsuits, other pipeline projects. So we're constrained, we're constrained to issue these intent-to-serv letters under many circumstances, where we simply have no way out. We would be the ones being sued if in fact we didn't. So that's the short answer. Thank you.
Vice President Stidell, did you wish to make a comment?
Thank you, President Farmer. Actually, I was going to do the same thing in terms of requesting some feedback from Mr. Carmel. So I'm glad he was able to, once again, be able to provide information that has to do with what limitations the CCSD has to work under legally in terms of prior lawsuit settlements, and what kind of exposure we would have by ignoring what those obligations are, and provide the opportunity for people in the community to understand that we are not operating with wanton disregard. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Vice President Stidell. It appears that at some point in the near future, the board, and that would include, let's say, the new board, we probably need to revisit this item, get some clarity on, let's say, what the district would be up against if we decided not to continue to send intent-to-serv letters forward to the Coastal Commission, and go from there. Consider we seem to be between a rock and a hard place, so to speak. And then again, maybe not. All right, let's move forward to item number four and the consent. Yes? Director Howell, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
You're on mute, Director Howell.
Thank you. I noticed that before you closed public comment, President Farmer, that Ms. Dickinson had raised her hand, and it is still up.
Excuse me, excuse me, Tina. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Osana, and welcome, Osana. Glad to have you on board. I also watched the Coastal Commission, and I think that the attitude and the response actually from Mr. Carmel as well is really troubling. We have a real problem. I'm being muted. It says I'm being muted by the host.
You're fine. You're fine. No problem.
All right. This is what I learned in listening to part of their strategic plan for five years. And it was really actually very, very sad to hear about their budget cuts. But I also learned that staff who work incredibly hard at Coastal have received a 10% pay cut. They are furloughed a couple of days a month, but they're still working within, I mean, they're still working even though they are furloughed, and a 10% cut in their pay. We are only adding, as Dan Carl, Deputy Director Dan Carl pointed out, we are only adding to the workload that is beyond the workload that any of you can even begin to imagine, I think. And by doing this, only, I mean, Ms. Satimi was in a very difficult situation, very difficult, because she had been told that this was fine. This was not a pipeline project, Mr. Carmel. And I think we need to be really, really careful when these, when you're issuing intent-to-serves, that you make sure, absolutely sure, that it is, the pipelines are gone, the grandfather, you are gone. You really need to be very, very careful, because as Mr. Carmel pointed out, the lawsuits are coming up and have come up. And I'd like to know what happened with the lawsuit from, was it Weedland or whatever? There were 10 plaintiffs? That was three years ago, I believe. When are we ever going to find out what happened to that? So while you're saying that lawsuits are being filed or will be filed, can we just find out at least from the ones that have already been filed from some years back? We're never getting any reports. But I would advise this board and the board, the new board coming on, to take a very careful look at this, because it's going to blow up in front of you at some point. And last Friday was really indicative of the Coastal Commission having had enough of it. So please be advised that you guys need to really look into this more carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dickinson. Much appreciated. Seeing no further folks wishing to make public comment, let's move on to item four in the consent agenda. Anyone wish to pull anything from consent? Or should we hear a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda? Director Rice?
I just would like to make a quick clarification on the, on the committee bylaws. Reminder from what we spoke about last time, there's just a couple of things that need clarity. So I just want to...
Okay. Does your wish to elaborate, or you just want to leave it there?
If nobody else has anything they want to pull, I can elaborate now.
I had indicated previously that I had a question, at least, on item B, 4B. And it has just to do with wording. And I wasn't sure what the last sentence of that staff report really was indicating, when it was saying that the Prose Commission is responsible for preparing the RFP. So to what extent does that mean? That it's the full cycle of the RFP, including doing the evaluation? When the RFPs come in and making selection and everything? Or is that more a function of something that has to do with our purchasing cycle and some limitations that may exist there? I'm trying to understand what that crossover is.
Well, we have obviously both general manager Wygold and commission head, commission head Steve Niffen here. So maybe one of them could give you some clarity on this.
And President Farmer, it isn't so much that, it's just for clarification purposes, because there isn't anything in this consideration that is actually directing an action on the RFP. It's making a change in the way that it has to be reproached by segmenting the proposal process. But I'm more than happy to have it just be when it needs to come back to us if there's an associated RFP, or the RFP goes out at that time, to be able to have answers to those questions.
All right. Thanks, Vice President.
I can briefly interject. It's my understanding that the Prose Commission's responsible for preparing the RFP. But once it's prepared and goes out, it'll have to go through the normal process, which ultimately lands in the board's hands.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Carmel.
Sorry, I didn't think about you, Tim, just giving us the answer. My apologies. Director Howell?
Yes. Oops, sorry. In the, again, this doesn't need to come off the consent agenda, but there is a typo in the board-approved bylaws for the committees that I think if it's appropriate, could be corrected at this time. And that is in paragraph 7.1, I see what appears to me to be a missing word. "The rules contained in the current edition of Rosenberg's Rules of Order, newly revised," and then what we have is a comma, "the current edition of Robert's Rules," where Rosenberg's is silent. There should either be, there should be an "and," I think, before the reference to the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order. Otherwise, the sentence really doesn't make sense. It's a minor matter. So if we can make that as, include that as part of the consent, then it doesn't need to be pulled.
The option would be potentially to, to handle that as part of the next revision to the bylaws, too.
So Dawn, just out of curiosity, I don't want to take any more time on this. If you would just read what it is that you wish to change and add the word "and" to?
Okay, this is the way I think the sentence should, should read. Again, we're all looking at the same thing, is 7.1 on page seven of the packet, under parliamentary authority. This is the way I believe it should read. "The rules contained in the current edition of Rosenberg's Rules of Order, newly revised, and the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order, where Rosenberg's is silent, shall govern the committee in all cases to which they are applicable, and then et cetera." So it's just a matter of putting conjunction in there. It's such a minor thing that it seems to me if we're already, we could make that change at the same time as we're eliminating that whole Section 9 that's on there, which is why we're looking at this at all.
Right. Well, I'm going to assume we're all in conjunction with what you've just requested, Dawn. It appears, it appears we have a member of the public who wishes to comment on the consent agenda. So Osana, could you call in then, please?
Yes, Tina Dickinson. There you go.
Thank you, Osana. Thank you, President Farmer. On this item, I'm really confused. I went back to the agenda for October 8 and for the 15. And there are no minutes posted that I could find for either one of those agenda items. So on the October 8, the Section 9 was still included on that agenda. And yet today, everything's been sort of gone through and read and removed. So if we don't have any minutes from the meeting where this apparently was discussed and taken care of, I don't, I don't know. We don't, there's nothing there for the 8th or the 15th, as far as minutes. It just says agenda. You look to the left-hand side, even, nothing for minutes. So I didn't have anything really to find out for exactly when. It says it took place on October 8, where a decision was made by the ad hoc committee. But we don't have any, at least from my viewing of the minute, of looking for the minutes, nothing there. But I'm not quite sure how this can go forth. It's also problematic to me as to why they were all, it was all removed. Can someone explain why number nine was removed?
President Farmer, I can, I can make that, I can explain.
And then the minutes. We need to have somebody check that why the minutes are not up. If someone could look at that, too.
Unless I'm wrong, I think minutes are usually included at the second board meeting of the month, but I could be in error. Anyway, Vice President Stidell, go right ahead, and then Director Rice wishes to make a comment.
So when the bylaws were brought forward, they were brought forward in red line with all the suggested revisions or adjustments or inclusions or eliminations. The copy that's part of the agenda today is a clean copy that took into account all of those changes which were approved at a board meeting. The reason that the nine is coming back with the red line to it is that at the introduction of the bylaws discussion, when the red line copy existed, there was a discussion about number nine was actually a reference point that came out of the board bylaws, and really shouldn't be part of what was presented for that review. When the motion was put together to accept the changes, there were some wording changes that happened that were part of that motion. What we negotiated to do was incorporate that adjustment that had been discussed at the beginning. It was just missed as part of being incorporated into the motion. And so this is just an administrative correction to remove that element that should not have been part of the revised bylaws that were passed by the board and had been discussed but weren't part of the motion. I hope that explains it.
Well, thank you, Vice President Stidell. Director Rice has her hand back up. And so we'll go to Director Rice and then Director Howell. So Amanda, go right ahead.
Thank you, President Farmer. I just wanted to draw everyone's attention to the section on vacancies and appointments. The terms for these committees is two years. And, and there is not a great clarity when that two years started. Did it start the month of the first meetings of the committees? And I believe, and we should definitely speak the intent, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Stidell, but the intent on the two-year terms is if somebody resigns before the end of the two years, whoever's appointed fills that for two years. But we're about to come up on two years. So I'm suggesting that in January, you take a look again at that and set maybe a month of the year in, say, odd-numbered years, when the board looks at those appointment terms and to see. And it's not something that, as the committee, we were asked to do, but it is something that I think the board needs to consider when you consider the bylaws during the January and February meetings. So that's the only comment I wanted to make. Otherwise, I'm supportive. There's a little typo in 3.4, isn't on its own line. This is on...
Oh, right.
Yeah, it's under number three. It's on page five of the one I'm looking at.
Yeah.
It just needs to be, it's near the bottom of the page. It's just 3.4 chairperson duties. It just needs to be on its own line. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Director Rice and Director Howell.
Thank you. Yes, good sharp eyes, Director Rice. I saw that. It was in my list of things, but I'm glad you caught it. Just to clarification for Ms. Dickinson, we do not post the minutes of a previous meeting until they have been approved. And that is why you do not see the minutes on the website at this time. That's all. I just wanted to get clarity. It isn't because we're not, everybody's doing their job. It's just inappropriate to post minutes that have not been approved, that have not been board-approved. Oops, sorry.
All right. All right. We're, it's kind of interesting how much time we're spending on consent agenda without pulling anything. So now, it's not, no, nobody's problem. Just making a comment. Once again, Director Rice?
I move approval of the consent agenda, subject to the brief discussion regarding the addition of the word "and." I move approval of the consent agenda, subject to the brief discussion regarding the addition of the word "and."
I'll second that.
Osana, if you could do a roll call, please. Thank you.
Okay, you're saying Director Rice.
Director Rice.
Aye.
Vice President Stidel.
Aye.
Director Pearson.
Aye.
Director Howell.
Director Howell.
Aye.
And President Farmer.
Aye. Thank you, Osana, with able coaching from Haley. Thank you, Haley. That is making a good team. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, let's, let's finally move on to regular business and item 5A. And nobody minds. I just want to get a clarification because earlier today, there was apparently some change made on regular business item 5A. I looked through it. I couldn't find whatever that change was, but maybe I'm just not as alert as I should be. So maybe we could get some clarification on 5A before, with regard to that, before we move forward. Is that possible? General Maggiorego?
Yes, President Farmer, gen item 5A, which is discussion and consideration adoption of draft policy 4150. CCSD policy and procedures for filling vacancies on the Board of Directors by appointment and addendum number one to policy 4150. This, this was updated as the, we included some changes following the Policy Board Committee meeting. And so it may be best to turn it over to Director Howell to address some of, some of those changes there.
May I proceed, President Farmer?
Go right ahead, Dylan. Thank you.
Actually, the, the changes that you're seeing before you know are, the only changes are changes that were recommended by our counsel, Mr. Carmel. Everything else that I see is exactly as we had submitted it to you. Wait a minute. Never mind. Erase that. There is a change. Sorry. In addition to the red line changes that you have in front of you, there was a change to paragraph 4150.3.2.3, page 17 of your packet. And I don't recall what the original was, but if you look at paragraph A, following the sentence where it speaks about for the rank choice process of selection each word, I think is, we had somewhat different wording in there, starting at that to the end of the paragraph. And it was an explanation of the ranked choice voting, which there are many ways in which the ranked choice voting can be done. And then each, each has its own disadvantages. So I think the further direction, discussion by the committee settled upon the, the method that we're proposing here. And so the original sentence referred to an earlier slightly different method. So, and I don't want to really, unless you really want to go into the ins and outs of ranked choice voting, I don't want to trouble you at this point with what that original, what the difference was. But what we're proposing is a method which is then shown by example in the addendum. So that's, that's the other change. So changes by, that were recommended by legal counsel and then the change the committee made to describe more fully and, and some slightly differently, the ranked choice voting method. And I believe part of that was a response to the board's request that they, that we include an example or something to kind of make this a little more concrete. So that was their intent. So that's what you have before you now. And the only other thing I'll mention prior to your discussion is that we are bringing this to you. I think it's appropriate for me to say this now. This is something that needs to be addressed with a full board. That we do not want to get in a position of having a resignation and getting into a situation where you have, where you have four board members that have trouble. It's very hard, especially if it's, if the board is somewhat polarized, to, to reach agreement when you just have an even number and you can't, it can be difficult. So this is the kind of thing that is better. This should be negotiated by a board before they ever have to deal with this, with this problem. To negotiate it when you have the vacancy that you're trying to fill, I just, it makes an already difficult job much harder. So that's why we're, and so that's, I'm speaking for myself and for the committee as to why we're suggesting this at this time.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Director Howell. Let's get some brief comment from members of the board. And I see there's one person in attendance in the public. And so we'll go to that individual right after Vice President Stidel makes a comment.
Thank you, President Farmer. Actually, there are, there are two items I wanted to ask about. The first one, maybe I just need to be reminded about something, but I don't know what the relative explanation was for this. And it's the 4150 dot three dot one. And it's the section shall become effective 12 months following adoption of the policy. And I just didn't understand what the delay was in that. And it's just, you know, for my own clarification, not because I'm challenging it, but I just, I didn't know, didn't understand the implication. I don't know if Director Howell might be able to give some feedback on that. You?
Don, you need to unmute yourself. Don, you need to unmute yourself, please. Thank you.
I'll take it that I may answer. Yes, thank you, Director Stidel. That was the other change I forgot to mention. When we passed this for you, when we brought this to the board originally, the, that paragraph 4150, 31 was in there. And it was at my own recommendation, actually, that it be removed. Because I felt that it, it was not a good idea for any board to be trying to do this during the period right bef, right before and/or right after an election. Because the outcome of that paragraph, as you read it, would depend very much upon who the slate was, who was on the slate, and who was, in fact, the, the next highest vote getter which didn't get the appointment. So it seemed inappropriate to be discussing that when those, when the slate or the next highest vote getter would already be known. Because we're trying to devise a set of general principles that should, rather than have some, some strategy going on under the, under the covers, as it were.
Oh, okay.
The reason, the reason, though, that you're seeing it now, that's the other thing, is that when I brought this back to the committee, they suggested, well, why don't we just go ahead with the paragraph so that the board can react to it, but include language to that it shall not come into effect until, and that's why the parenthesis. It's just that, so it enables to discuss this now because we're not talking about the current election at this point. So it's safe, I think, reasonable for us to do that. So I thought that was a good solution on their part, and that's why you're seeing it that way. Sorry, it's a long explanation.
No, and, and that makes, it makes sense to the extent that if it was in, within the first year anyway, it would be something that was specific to the election rather than, okay. Thank you for that explanation. The only other item was on 4150, 3.2.2. And it's at the very end of that. It has, members of the public in attendance at the special meeting may address the board only after all applicants have been interviewed. And it occurred to me that it was possible that as part of the process with public comment, that we should also consider the fact that the the candidate to whom, in public comment is being directed has an opportunity to provide some clarifying responses to something that may be directed or asked. And so what I'd like to suggest is that some wording to that effect go into as an addition to the end of that paragraph. And my suggestion would be during public comment, the board may offer an applicant the opportunity to provide a clarifying response to a given public comment.
May I?
Director Howell, go right ahead. If you, if you wish to respond.
Oh, thank you. The reason why we put that in was we did not want the applicants to come under attack by the public. That they, what we wanted was the applicants to each, and you'll notice it's also constructed, so even the board members. The board members are only allowed to ask clarify, if all the, get the same set of questions. Board members can then ask, this is how they envisioned it. And then board members can ask for clarification, but that's all. No other questions may be asked. And by the same token, and the reason we had the public comment is that we thought, well, before the board votes, public could weigh in on who they like or don't like. But again, we did not want the public interacting with the, with the candidates. We've seen situations in the past where that can get really, really nasty, really, really fast.
Conversation. Yeah. No, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. So, so partly it was to be, have it a fair process that would be as, as, as untraumatic as we could make it. Understanding that as anyone who tells, I personally have not gone through this, but those who have say, it's not a fun experience.
Right.
We don't want, we want people to vote, to step up. So we, we don't want them to feel that they're going to be attacked or otherwise denigrated. So that was the reason for that wording. But remember, this is only the committee's recommendation. So anything is, it's all up for, for your changing or approving or what have you.
My, my reason for mentioning it was exactly what you had described. It's just that it can happen as readily at the end when it's public comment in total as it can during the process itself. So I guess I was just at least trying to interject the possibility of, and in reality, there's a control function that needs to happen at the board level also in terms of the public comment and, and giving some specific instruction about the kind of information that it's appropriate to bring forward. But I do think that the, also that the board saying that it could offer the applicant an opportunity to respond may still be a possible circumstance to consider, I guess. So it's just a matter of hearing from some of the other board members, maybe to see how they feel.
Well, Director Rice has her hand up. And then hopefully we can go to the member of the public who wishes to comment. Director Rice.
Excuse me, President Farmer. I don't, I, I'd like to hear from the public first because I, I would like to continue our discussion following, hearing from the public.
All right. Thank you. Osana, if you could call on the member of the public to speak, please. Thank you very much.
Yes, Crosby and Laura Swartz. Go ahead.
Farmer and members of the board. When the agenda package for this item was first released, I noticed that there was a discrepancy in the step-by-step description of the ranked choice procedure between the body of the policy and the addendum one. And I had pointed this out to Director Howell, and they, the discrepancy was corrected. However, I don't think the latest version of this policy is what was in the agenda package when I checked it on the website this morning. So I think there's still a problem. It's, the addendum one gives a detailed step-by-step policy of how you do this. And that is different from what the step-by-step policy is in, in paragraph A. So I think there's still a problem here. It's my understanding that the addendum one step is what the intention of the policy committee was. And, but there's still an error in the body of the, of the policy. I can go into more detail, but that's essentially the problem. Do you need, do you need a specific?
No, thank you, Crosby. Harry.
Go right ahead, Don.
Sorry. Yes, thank you, Crosby. That is an error on our part. And I, boy, talk about confirmation bias. I knew what this was supposed to say, so I looked right at it. And boy, it does not say, this is the wrong version. This is not the version. Crosby is absolutely right. Yeah. So I'm sorry. I'm afraid we're going to have to pull this until the next time. Unless you want.
Can we have some discussion?
And then maybe we can clean it up so we can go on consent or something. But, but as it is now, yeah, I don't want you to pass it as it is. And I apologize. That's my fault. I should have caught that. It went through twice and I didn't miss, I totally didn't get it. That is, that's embarrassing. Right here I am telling you, just with a bald face. And with a straight face telling you we had changed that. And, and there you are. Look, thank you, Crosby.
Let me just ask legal counsel, and maybe I'm showing you a certain amount of lack of understanding, but is there a way that we could like make the changes that Mr. Swartz has indicated and Mr. Howell has definitely confirmed needs to take place? Is there any way that we can do that today with this item and then go ahead and approve it? I think that's possible, isn't it?
Yes, of course. As long as we're very specific with the wording and the record is clear, we can go forward. I don't know whether, I don't know whether Director Howell wants to go forward.
If I may, I really think that, I think if we could just get the, the board's reactions, let, let us hear what they would pass. And then let me take this back and we'll readjust it. So it won't take any additional, hopefully, no additional time on consent. But right now, I, yeah, I could find it, but I'll have to look through some correspondence to get it. That's going to take time. Then I'll have to read it. Of course, I'm taking more time now than, but I, I highly recommend that, wait, that, that if you'll just give us the input now and maybe even take a straw vote or something to see how you would or indicate what, how you would vote if, if we were voting is, I think they can do that, can't they, Mr. Carmel, without a real vote?
Yes.
Yeah. So what I'm asking is let me know how you would vote or what changes that you would make so that you could vote for it. And then also would take some input from the public on that and then see what, because I think we can put it on consent next time because I'm, I'm mostly hearing that you're all pretty much in favor of it. Except for a certain item, certain elements. So that would be my preference, but I'll, I'll do whichever way you like.
Right. Thank you, Director Howell. We also have someone who wishes to speak in the public on this item. So, Osana, if you could call on them, please. And then we'll come back to Director Rice.
Yes, Tina Dickinson, please.
Thank you. I'm a little bit confused on what Director, Vice President Stidel brought up in response to Director Howell regarding the public comment portion. And when the public could address, when it would be appropriate. I think the very fact that we just had an instance of a member of the public bringing up an item here regarding the change or not the change shows how important the publics can be. And so I'd like to just get clarification of what Vice President Stidel meant when she brought up the public and also the applicant being able to respond again. I don't, I don't, didn't hear any clarification on that from the board. Could we, could I please get it? And for others, maybe who are wondering the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dickinson. Director Rice, did you wish to make a comment before we endeavor to get a little bit more clarification from Vice President Stidel?
Yes, I actually had comments on the same sentence from page 17 about members of the public in attendance. Because this is, this is an important part of the process. I mean, a public, a public appointment process is not an easy thing to do because because somebody's feelings is are always going to get hurt because you're not going to be able to pick everybody. What made, what made me okay with the way that this is, this is being suggested by the committee is that if you look at the the interview portion of of this item as kind of the staff report. Generally, the way that an agenda item is conducted is it's introduced. There's a staff report. If there's questions or clarifications from the board, then public comment. And then discussion and decision where appropriate. So if you consider the staff report to be those interviews, then having the public comment following those interviews makes makes sense. I'm a little concerned with the rebuttal issue because we don't want to have a back and forth between the public. But I think that that it is, that it is not a bad suggestion to have the president and or acting president, depending on, you know, if the president's the one who resigns, then it would be vice president or however that have that have, just like they do in the in our bylaws, they have the authority and discretion to allow somebody to rebut something if they need, if they feel that it's necessary. Otherwise, otherwise, it doesn't seem like good practice to just generally do rebuttal. But I I do agree with you that it might be a good idea to have something in there that the president still has some discretion to allow it. The, I'm glad to hear that we're going to fix the example. I was really glad to see the example was in there. Thank you very much because it is kind of a confusing process. And now I'm going to go backward a little bit to the I want to go back to section four, one, five, oh, three point one. Because I I don't agree with this particular suggestion. I don't necessarily think it's a great idea for a number of reasons. Including that the person who is the next largest vote getter may not be interested anymore, may have taken a different position, may have gone somewhere else and moved. I mean, we don't, I don't think, especially not for a twelve month period. I'd be okay with having it in if it was eight months, maybe six months, maybe. But but I think further than that away from an election, especially because the competition against that person or I don't want to say against that person, but the the competition is not the same. So so if we use twenty sixteen as an example, the the number four top vote getting candidate was Gail Robinett. And if we'd had a vacancy in the first twelve months, she would have automatically been appointed, but she may not have wanted to take that position. So so I, and she may. I I think it's okay for the board to to give a nod to somebody who committed enough to actually put their name in and run a campaign. And clearly has shown some support of the town with the ten percent. But I I do not think that it should be part of the policy that that is the first option. And then if there's not, if it isn't in the twelve months or there, that person doesn't want to have it. I I just don't think it's a good idea. I'd be okay to approve it if it was not a twelve month period, but rather something more like six or eight months, depending on how the rest of the board feels about it generally. I'd rather just pull it out entirely because whoever runs still can apply to to be appointed. The last thing I want to raise is, and then and then I want to hear from the rest of the board is, is I think that are we going to ask the same questions of every candidate? And if we are, why are we not putting those onto the application and then having a different process of inner for interviewing? Because if we get essay questions, responses, then the public already knows what their answers will be. And so they'll be more well informed when they do to get to there. If we ask all the candidates the same questions, but not and have the application just be essentially name, address, contact information to verify they're a registered voter within the district. Then and not put the questions on there, that's also fine. But it just is a different, so so that that doesn't have a lot of clarity for me, how you do, whether the application is just a super simple or you're looking for something more detailed for the application. In which case, the interview process, I suspect, would be slightly different because we would already have some answers. I I don't, I'm kind of torn on that one about how to how to, what the details might be. And I think that leaving it vague is okay because then a future board that has to deal with it will have to come up with how they go about this. That's kind of what we're trying to avoid having to have people do when they're in the situation, right? It's trying to get this done ahead of time, so. I don't, I I don't know what to do with that one. Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you, Director Rice. So Director Howell, one of the, one of the comments, suggestions that Director Rice just made was that entire part of this of this item, four, one, five, point three, four, one, five, zero, three, point one. How do, how do you feel about that? And I obviously maybe should ask other board members as well.
You're muted.
You need to unmute yourself, Don.
Sorry, my computer was misbehaving here, okay. I'd like to reserve my own thoughts on this until I hear the rest of the board members. However, I could say that I think the eight, eight months is is certainly reasonable. And I don't think the committee would necessarily have any problem with that. Right, right now, I want to kind of present there. I I do have to say in some respects, I don't agree with everything that the committee did. But as I promised them, I will give a fair presentation of what the majority of the committee has asked. And in this particular case, if I remember correctly, the the version which you should, which you should have had, including the the that last paragraph there that needs modification is was passed unanimously. So I I will give you my own personal feelings, but first of all, I want to hear as it's presented to you how you feel. But I I do think in easy, the easy change to eight months would definitely be that I don't think is a material change, really. And the other thing, just very briefly on the matter of the applications, and I think their intention is, and it actually says, it says that a uniform application presenting the minimum requirements for serving. So the the, in other words, there were not going to be any questions and the and and also in the interviews itself, the applicants are sequestered. So in theory, they do not know what those questions are going to be. In theory. And certainly, they won't know what each other's answers are. So again, that's the best I can tell you. I I as to how I feel in general about the the this particular paragraph, the forty one, fifty, three point one, let me hear, I'd like to hear from the rest of you before I, because I don't want to influence your opinion. Till I've heard it.
Do any, any other members of the board have any comment on the suggestions made by Director Rice? Director Pierce.
Yeah, I would, I'm going to abstain from this since, since even though there is that parentheses area in there, since I'm the one that is in that position, I'm going to abstain from voting. But but I think the Policy Committee did a fantastic job here. Director Howell, you guys debated this, did a good job. You put all of the required stuff up front so that we all know that, the public all knows that this is required steps. And I really appreciated that because that brings real clarity to why we have to go through the steps that we have to go through. And then I'm fine with with exactly how it reads, you know, changing it as as Mr. Schwartz said, that to make the two in compliance. But otherwise, I I think you did a fabulous job, absolutely great job, thank you.
Thank you, David. Vice President Stidell.
Thank you, President Farmer. In, again, relative to forty one, fifty, three, one. I I guess it could be argued either way in terms of whether the the note goes or stays. The one thing about it going is that it's a much cleaner approach to what the, what the process and procedure is, rather than having another built in timeline embedded into the process and having to consider that. So that there, there is the benefit of that. The the questions not being part of the application, I, in the way that it's recommended here in the procedure. I support the idea of putting the questions out at the time that the applications go out are in my mind equivalent to giving someone a, you know, in school, a test and giving them the book and sending them home to complete the test. So I, you know, I want to hear, I want to hear someone, you know, speak and address a question extemporaneously because that helps you understand the strengths and skill sets that they have. So I think that's important and I I support the way that it is stated within the policy right now. And the 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 public comment portion. What I was suggesting was wording that gave the the board president the opportunity to offer an applicant. It said may, it didn't say will. So it wasn't something that had to be adhered to. It's just there was an X, I feel that addresses enough flexibility so that if if the occasion should arise where it's necessary to offer that opportunity, it can be made. And that's the summary of my positions.
Thank you, Vice President Stidell, Director Rice once again.
So I'm, I I really want to thank the committee for formulating forty one, fifty, three point one because we could be at this meeting today getting into a fairly lengthy discussion about whether or not it's a good idea to just appoint the person who got the most votes last time. Because we've had that discussion on this board previously. And so I I very much thank them for the work that went into this. And the fact that we're pulling it is a testament to the fact that they have provided us with enough options for us to get something that we can all agree will effectuate what we're trying to do, which is limit the trauma of appointment process, which is, I think, what I was hearing. Because that's a good thing, limiting trauma. And 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 I, and even with that, I I, because it's true. We did at one point discuss whether this is a good idea and having this language here so we could see what it looks like in real, in real life makes me think, okay, this is a good idea, I'm glad they looked into it. I'm glad so we don't have to have this discussion and I would prefer that that it's taken out. I have no horse in in this race, so to speak. And so so I'm okay either way, especially if we change it to eight months and then it's effective after the next election or whatever. That's what the twelve months intended, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rice. Vice President Stidell, you wish to make another comment?
Thank you, Director Farmer. I just wanted to also add my thanks for Director Howell to please pass to the committee for the very studied work that they provided to us. And I agree with Director Rice, they provided us with the information we've needed and provided the areas of opportunity for us to to consider. So very much thanks to them for their work and for yours. Thank you.
So so before I I make a brief comment, I just want to make a statement that with regard to the three standing committees that we have. And obviously finance, people will, money always needs to be tended to in one fashion or another. So the Finance Committee is obviously right up there with, you know, what's most important. And then, of course, we have resources and infrastructure and infrastructure, especially with water and wastewater. Obviously, that's what we do. You know, what you drink and what you flush is like really important. But somehow policy seems to be, you know, the 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 last one we think about with regard to the committees. And you folks do yeoman's work and don't necessarily get the credit, maybe from the public or even from the board at some times. So it's nice that you're getting that acknowledgement today. I'm thinking back to the election that we had in twenty sixteen. And I think it was in August, which I guess would have been nine months after the election or actually more than that, or the appointee would have been ten months or so, that we had a board member who resigned. And so we went through the discussion, people applied, they came up and, you know, gave their presentations. Or I'm trying to remember if they even had an opportunity to give a presentation because the person who came in fourth at that time, someone else gave up, what was an applicant? A number of people got up and spoke in that person's favor and that person got appointed to the board. And the person who came in fourth didn't even get any significant, significant acknowledgement with regard to the hard work that they had done in running in the first place. So I just wanted to bring that back for, you know, refreshing our memory. So I I think it's, to me, it's kind of a difficult call. Do we just give credit to somebody that worked hard and actually ran to the office? Or do we just allow anyone who wishes to apply? And let's say, acknowledge the fact when we do go through the application process that we have somebody applying that actually went through the process and maybe just consciously or whatever, give them a little bit more of how could we say it? Lean more favorably toward them than we may have otherwise because they did go through the effort initially. So I'm just just putting that out there. So I guess I'm okay with either way and it being eight months. Although, like I said, that previous example I just gave you was nine months. Or just allowing for the process to start all over again. I don't know if that makes any sense, but those are my teeter totter comments. So I, Director Howell.
Oh, I'm not, thank you. So I think you've told me everything I I want. I think we can come up with something that that will pass muster on consent. I I did say I'd give my own opinion. And I I keep hearing good arguments on several different sides, so the opinion kind of changes. My initial, my initial reaction was that I wasn't real fond of this idea of the the runner up. However, there are sufficiently good arguments for that. Now, there are those who would think a runner up would be appropriate at any time during a term. And that, in fact, that's where the discussion at the committee started. So what we have here is kind of a compromise. And it's, I find it acceptable. It's an acceptable compromise, especially I I believe the eight month limitation does make some sense. It does bring it a little more into, I won't go into all the details, but it does bring us a little more into the the code, which uses a similar kind of a threshold. Earlier on in the recitations, it, there's like a hundred and thirty day period within which or before which, which is actually hundred and thirty days is four months generally. So I I think if I, I think I would like to bring this back to you with the following changes then. And so please let me, just by nodding your head or or something. I'd like to make the change suggested by Director Stidell such that that last paragraph, the last sentence would read or we would add a sentence after the so it would read, members of the public in attendance at the special meeting may address the board only after all applicants have been interviewed. The presiding officer may allow an applicant to respond to public comment. Or I might make it a little more smooth, you know, and probably give the indication that probably we better not to do so. But sometimes I I would say, yes, if someone is being attacked or something. But sometimes, I would say, yes, if someone is being attacked or something, or maybe there's an issue of clarification, I can, it's kind of up to the presiding officer to decide what's fair and what's appropriate there. So that works for me. And then the other thing I would change is the twelve months. I would change that to eight, I think, and do that. And then, as I said, the section, it would be the, basically, the last section of the last part of that paragraph regarding describing the method of voting would be the only part. So I'm prepared to bring that with, to brack to you on a consent. So, and I think, assuming that you agree on the new paragraph A, the new paragraph about the voting, I suppose that could be a matter of concern. So, but other than that, I think, and to me, when I read it, it seemed clear to me. So I think you'll like it. And, but if not, I think maybe we can even, without violating the Brown Act, as long as you communicate only with me. If there's something about that you don't like, I can communicate back and forth to you and I can adjust it appropriately, provided I don't talk to anybody else about it. So that's how I would like to go with that, if you don't mind. So may I move that this be tabled until our next meeting and that it be on the consent agenda at that time?
Well, I'll ask for a second on that and then I'll, I'll on Director Rice. She wishes to make a comment.
Anybody wants to second me?
I'll second it.
Right, Director Rice?
I just, since you're taking it back for revisions, perhaps we could add four-one-five-oh-point-two-point-three-three, something that says, once we have a quorum of the board, then it goes to the usual, go back to step one. We've got to go to ten-loop here if we're not careful.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Director Rice. Yeah, I forgot about that. So for those of you, it's the issue when the, let us say that you have a huge mass resignation and all but one board member are left. The board cannot appoint a replacement until it has a quorum. And the only way it can get a quorum is by going to the Board of Supervisors and asking for some directors to be appointed. So what Director Rice is saying is that, once we get to the quorum, then the process commences. So it's just as a point of clarification that, to remind people that, okay, once we have a quorum, then we basically go back to the beginning of the policy and work through it. Did I state that correctly? Yeah, okay. So if you're all comfortable, then I'm comfortable. And the committee thanks you in advance for your appreciation and I thank you too.
Thank you, Director Howell. Thanks for your hard work and putting yourself out there at this particular discussion. I'm just wondering if I did something correctly or incorrectly. There, Mr. Carmel, Director House suggested that we table this. And I asked for a second. Do we need to actually make a motion in a second to table this or not? And then have the vote?
We really don't need to take any action because you're not taking action.
Okay.
We'll just put it on the consent agenda, but you can if you want to.
Okay.
I would, forgive me, I would prefer a vote. I found that we're not taking as many votes as we should. And it does, we lose clarity when we don't vote. So I'd appreciate a vote on this, please.
No problem. So we have a motion made by Director Howell and it was seconded by Vice President Stidell, if I'm not mistaken. So Osana, go ahead and take a vote, please?
Okay, Director Howell?
Aye.
Vice President Stidell?
Aye.
Director Pearson?
I'm staying.
Director Rice?
Aye.
And President Farmer?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item six and future agenda items. Oh, excuse me, Director Rice, did you wish to make another comment?
Your agenda item.
Sorry.
Okay, so let's move on to future agenda items and, okay, so Director Rice, she's taking, yeah, hold on, hold.
Sorry.
I know you're taking your hand down, but you had it up earlier, so go right ahead.
I, that's what, I had my hand up for future agenda items. I'm sorry, I jumped the gun, President Farmer.
No, no, it's no problem. This is nonviolent communication here, so no problem, go right ahead.
So I'm going to give you a fairly big list that is things that I really wish we'd gotten done over the past eight years that really probably should get some attention. And I want to have it be on the record. These are some things that probably the board should look at. Of course, it's the board's decision, once I'm off the board, whether to do that or not. But we need to be looking at the district's fee schedule, which includes things like banners, renting the vets' hall, doing an inspection for retrofits. We really need to update that. It's been since 2013. Connection fees are also something that desperately need to be updated. They have also not been updated for a length of time since before we had the loan on the SWF. So that needs to be updated for sure before there's any process on intent-to-serv letters, which we're not ready for yet, as we heard from the public and the Coastal Commission and the county. So we're not giving them out, but we haven't done it since 2001. We should, this is a time when we can just, let's start from scratch. How do you do building? What's the process if somebody wants to get a water meter in this town? That's something that needs to be addressed in addition to the connection fees. Again, not urgent, but definitely needs to be done. Drought stages with triggers and restrictions. I think I don't need to elaborate there. I'm a little concerned how many cameras we have now around town that are owned by CCSD. I would like to see something happen for accountability and/or transparency so we don't just have Big Brother eye in the sky. Again, take them or leave them. There was discussion, probably 2012, 2013, about vacation rentals and how we can't charge them a different amount than regular houses. But there may be a process in, because they do have to come through CCSD to get a thing that says they're allowed to have a vacation rental according to CCSD. They still have to take that to the county because we don't do the permitting. But it's something that you might want to consider. And the last thing I'd like to say is that we really should have a shift in the paradigm in this town. This town is the right size to be a model community in lots of ways, including the way that we lower our carbon footprint. Thank you, Mr. Weigold, for your efforts on behalf of electric vehicle users to work toward carbon footprint reduction. But this is a beautiful place to live. Instead of saying, no, get out, let's try and cultivate cultivate a community where we share what we have, not overly share. But we are all trying to get the right amount of resources for ourselves. And this is a community, we need to take care of each other. And it's not a hardship to share. It's a very frustrating situation to me that this is still a fight we're having when we don't need to go there. On the strategic plan, levels of service is a critical point. What level, what do you expect from customer service? How fast do you expect the fire truck to come to you? What are the expectations from the thirty-thousand-foot level for these different services that are provided? What do we expect when we call the office? What do we expect when we have our sewer overflowing on our street? What is it that we want to try and meet as goals? I very much appreciate the fact that this board has been very stable and calm in discussing things. And we don't rely on fear to try and get people to come along with us. And we are working toward balance because since 1976, we've had fire, water, sewer, along with other elements. So it's not just water and sewer here. We have a really important and well-staffed fire department that provides emergency services. That's almost a third of the budget. And let's not forget the open space that's so precious to everyone in this town is also an important part. The last thing I want to say is today is the, it's been thirteen years officially, as of today, since I started a website called AboutCambria.com. And I discontinued using it on advice of council to avoid Brown Act violations because it was a blog that allowed for commenting. So I discontinued it in 2012. But that's kind of what got me started on this whole journey was all of that. And how much do we mean when we say enough? Do we have enough? I think we do. We just need to share it better and manage it better. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Rice, for those thoughtful suggestions for a future consideration for the upcoming board and then some. Vice President Stidell?
I have one agenda item that I'd like to address. As a future agenda item, I think that we need to bring a full discussion and status of the Affordable Housing Program back to the board.
Affordable housing?
Yes.
I second that motion.
All right, thank you. And Director Pearson?
Yeah, I actually have two things. Number one, President Farmer, I'm not going to be able to attend the NCAC meeting. And if you could appoint someone else or if somebody else could volunteer to attend that and give a report back to you, I think there's some important issues that will be discussed there. So you might want to have somebody there. Unfortunately, I can't, I can't attend that particular meeting.
Well, I usually attend a meeting anyway, so I'll just go ahead and do that, if nobody minds.
Sure.
President Farmer, as an option, it's possible to consider that, since Karen Dean is involved with NCAC and will be becoming a member of the board, that she can offer information in dual purpose and bring reports back about NCAC.
I don't think we can do that.
Yeah, she won't be on the board yet. Not on the board.
Okay, you're just talking about the upcoming meeting, just the singular upcoming meeting. Sorry. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Not a problem.
The other thing that I think should be on the agenda at some point is, and the public brought it up again today, is we need some clarification as to what is out there, that what letters of intent exist out there that we are just issuing will serve because we have to. What's that list look like? And, you know, some clarification as to why we have to do that so that both the public and the Coastal Commission understands why we're doing what we're doing. I think that's a good suggestion. I think that needs a debate. And then, at the same time, the board could offer some clarity as to the general manager as to when he should bring those issues to the board and when he can, when the board should allow him to bypass because it's a legal contract that we have that we have to fulfill with that particular item. Some clarity needs to be brought to that situation. And I think that should be on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. We have a member of the community that wishes to speak on future agenda items. I think we can allow that. So if, Osana, if you could call on that person, please?
Yes, they did, but right now, Tina Dickinson. Tina?
Thank you, Osana. Thank you, President Farmer. What Director Pearson just brought up, there definitely does need to be clarity on exactly what the district considers permissible as an intent to serve and what the Coastal Commission is making very clear in these denials. I would, if you haven't read staff reports from Coastal on these denials, I think it would be well worth every one of your time. I understand two members are not going to be on the board, but for certainly those who will be existable on the board and the new directors that will be placed, I really need to pay attention to this. This is really becoming such a problem. I agree wholeheartedly with Director Pearson, though, that, let's get this straight. What is, are there others in the pipeline that the Coastal Commission says there are not, but the district seems to think that there is? I also think that anytime anything like this should come before the general manager, that it needs to also come before the board. Because of the, it is so contentious. And it is going to continue to be contentious until someday it gets resolved. But I do not believe that the general manager should be doing this solo without the board hearing and the reasons why. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dickinson. You know, I'm just looking forward to the agendas for December and the second meeting in December, which is on the seventeenth, is pretty busy. So even though this is an item that definitely, this is relatively urgent in the scheme of things, to get some clarity on this issue and respond to the concerns, the very serious concerns of the Coastal Commission. So perhaps, once everyone gets their feet on the ground, the new members of the board, that the first, the first meeting of the year, first January meeting, we can discuss this particular item. We can all maybe go back, see what has happened in the past with regard to discussion by the Coastal Commission as well as what happened on November the sixth. So seeing no other future agenda items, and I was going to actually make that one of the future agenda items. It's what was just discussed there. So I'm going to, if nobody minds, adjourn this meeting and ask for public comment on items on closed session. So do we have anybody in attendance that wishes to speak on the items in closed session? I see one person raising their hand. Osana, if you would call on them, please?
Yes, Christine Heinrichs.
Thank you. I was impressed when Mr. Weigold joined Cambria's staff and started getting the ship of Cambria sailing. His technical skills and management experience were welcome additions to a district struggling with less competent leadership. He set to work at the wastewater and infrastructure, but lately, he's lost that focus. And it's not to his credit. The CDP permit application is a mess. It never should have been submitted in such incomplete form. It's going nowhere while he continues to claim it's fine. The new construction permits are inexcusable. His intransigence in insisting on his authority to grant them is causing problems for the district. Defying a powerful state agency and exposing the district to potential litigation for misleading applicants is unacceptable and needs to stop. Mr. Weigold has taken the wrong direction on this CDP, submitting a poorly documented application for a project that he was warned will have to meet a very high, perhaps unattainable standard. That application, the centerpiece of Cambria's administrative aspirations, now sits at the county lacking basic required now sits at the county lacking basic required information. It is going nowhere and Mr. Weigold has not been forthright with the board about it. Perhaps he actually thought that this was adequate. Whatever the reason, it's a serious misstep in his tenure. Because his judgment on this important issue is poor, he should not be given more power and responsibility. He should be admonished to turn his substantial technical and management skills to improving Cambria's infrastructure. He should concentrate on bringing solid infrastructure accomplishments to the board. The board should help and guide him by reducing his discretionary spending limit to five thousand dollars and requiring him to bring every prospective grant application before the board before applying. Prospective grant applications could also be reviewed by relevant standing committees before coming to the board, but board members should be willing to go over the grant opportunities and make thoughtful recommendations and no more new construction permits. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heinrichs. Uh, we have another person who wishes to speak. If, uh, Osana, if you would call on them, please?
Yes, Elizabeth Bettenhausen wishes to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very, thank you very much um, for allowing me to speak at this point before your closed session. I went to the, um, I, I listened to, I zoomed in with the, um, Resources and Infrastructure Standing Committee meeting the other day, and I was somewhat taken aback because, um, the specificity of what's happening with PG&E um, is not exactly specific. Um, there is a delay on getting clarity on where the money will come from, from the necessary projects. There's some delay on getting clarity on what exactly the projects are in which priority order. I grant that I might have misunderstood some of the discussion, although, um, I don't, um, I'll leave it at that. I might have misunderstood. But I would have hoped that somewhere in the monthly reports from the general manager, there would be a bit more specificity about what exactly a general manager does. And I want to make clear here, my ignorance is measurable only in, um, at least kilograms, if not more. So I am not a piddly ignorant person here. But it is increasingly unclear to me, looking at the monthly report from the general manager, exactly what a general manager is supposed to be doing. Um, I do not, um, need to read. I, I will, I will leave that out. I appreciate, um, facilities and, and utilities reports and all, but in his report, um, um, retired Admiral General Manager Weigold, I do not see much of what he does. So I hope, um, that you overcome the restraints of the law, which talk about how personal issues cannot be part of public, um, updates on this kind of thing. And I tell you that those laws are tough. But I think that you have here a situation where the public should at least be informed what your evaluation of the general manager consists in. If you can't be specific, um, in the, um, detail about minutia, that at least be specific. What are you expecting of the general manager? You as a board? And how happy are you with those expectations and their realization? So keep us public a bit better informed, please, on how you go about your work in this regard. I, I grant, I thank you for doing very difficult work here. Um, I've had to do it myself and, and, and hiring and firing. But I, I, I think the public of Cambria deserves, or Cambria, or Cambria, I grant the differences. Um, I think we deserve much more information than you are giving us both about your expectations and your evaluation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bettenhausen. Uh, it occurs you have one more person who wishes to speak, if you would call on them, Osana?
Yes, Tina Dickinson, if you would speak now, please?
Thank you. Um, with all due respect, I, I have a couple of comments that are, and obs- observations actually about, uh, the general manager. First of all, I have never, I, I don't think I've ever seen that, uh, so many evaluations of a general manager take place within such a short period of time. I think we're about seventeen months into, uh, the general manager's, uh, position here. Um, that has always struck me as being very odd that someone have to, would have to be evaluated time after time after time. And, 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 and yet we, we received no reports from closed session. Uh, I, I don't understand that. Um, I would also say that I've not been impressed with Mr. Weigold's minimalist approach to his general manager's, uh, position at board meetings. Uh, his, uh, he reads everything, you know, right from, from the paper and, uh, it doesn't engage. And I find that troubling. It seems that someone who is in charge of the district uh, staff or staff, we, we need to have more information. Um, there needs to be some, much more contact, I feel. And so in that regard also, uh, I am extremely troubled with the Instream Flow Study, with the CDP, with the, where we are after seven years. I don't blame Mr. Weigold or anybody else who is new to this, to this, a district. But my goodness, where are the reports? Where, when does the public find out what's going on? And this is, this is the issue, these are the issues, I think mostly that I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dickinson. Um, Osana, we have two wishes to speak, if you would call on them, please?
Yes, Michael Calderwood, go ahead. Unmute, Michael?
Good afternoon. Um, Mr. Weigold? I remember when we were going through the process of selecting a new GM and the esteemed Mr. Niffen made the comment that along the lines of whoever we pick, we're going to hate him too. Welcome to Cambria. I think you're doing a fine job under difficult circumstances. I think you're showing a, a calm and focused leadership that I would expect from a, a leader with your experience. Nobody who will ever get this job will know everything they need to know and nobody will be ever able to please everybody that believes they need to be pleased. But, uh, from my perspective, you're doing a great job under difficult circumstances. And, uh, I just wanted to know that some of us in the public appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. I don't see any more, uh, hands up to speak on, uh, public comment with regard to closed session. So I'm going to, uh, adjourn this meeting. It's three thirty-eight right now. Let's, uh, take a twelve minute break, if nobody minds, and, uh, we'll return at three fifty. Is everybody okay with that? Uh, well.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, well, you know, I had, there we go. Okay. Um, so we'll return and, and now eleven minutes. So see you back here at three fifty. Thank you very much.